Good evening, everyone. This is the East Aurora Union Free School District Board of Education meeting for Wednesday, December fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Please. May I have a motion to enter executive session to discuss the employment history of four particular employees, two matters related to pending litigation, and a matter related to a particular corporation? Both by Mr. Brunson? Second by Mr. Cassidy. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abrogations? Carried out. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for your patience. We are returning from executive session where we discussed the employment history of four particular employees, two matters related to pending litigation, matter related to a particular corporation, and a matter related to a particular group. Mr. Russ, agenda changes.
Yes, I have two. And item C under ten, reports of discussion. And addition item B under twelve, consensus items we require more action financially.
Item four, reports of discussion later in part one? Okay. I know what items this one are. Moving on to item six, different headed comments.
Yes, so today we're here to celebrate a number of our employees. One who has won a very distinguished award and will be grateful to have her with us tonight. And more people who are retiring. And so while we're very sad to see them go and they've had extraordinary careers, we are happy for them as they make this transition. And so we thought we would just spend a few moments to recognize each one of them. And then we're gonna have a little celebration. We got some cupcakes. And so I'd like to start off by introducing Bill Roberts.
Not retiring and did not win it for. Congratulations. First that guy. So, and Brian or Mr. Russ said brief, but this was hard for me to do for Chris Shudrum. But it's a true honor to recognize Chris Shudrum tonight. She has filled so many key roles at East Aurora High School and for many, many years. She's been a teacher, a coach, an advisor, a mentor, and a curriculum leader, to just name a few. Chris has designed and implemented curriculum for our physical education department and been a role model for the department and for teachers across the region and the state. She's always looking for professional development opportunities to better her teaching strategies. It's very clear to her students who have benefited from these efforts. The best example of this is her recent research, design, and implementation of new physical education options for our students. Chris leads and promotes a physical education program that includes choices for our students, which is very unique. These incredible, incredibly successful options include traditional physical education, competitive physical education, individual physical education, and fitness-based physical education. And I know our Board of Education, community, and most importantly, all of our students have embraced and celebrated these tremendously successful and most importantly, personal physical education options. When you observe Chris in the school environment, it's easy to see that she truly cares for the individual students in her classroom. Students are engaged and involved in her lessons. Our students are lucky to have such a hardworking, dedicated, and caring teacher. Outside of the classroom, Chris is a leader within our school as a past coach, coordinator of our famous badminton tournament, and the advisor of our very popular adventure club. She creates wonderful school spirit, teaches positive student leadership skills, and most importantly, her athletes and her students truly enjoy being in her presence. She has a positive relationship with her students, their parents, and the staff members. She has the ability to develop and implement ideas. She's creative, she's goal-oriented, she's bright, and she's dedicated. And it's not uncommon for me to hear, and I'm sure many of you, to hear her praises from school board members, district administrators, and community members. It is because of this that Chris has distinguished herself in the physical education profession. Last month, she was honored by the New York State Association of Health, Physical Education, Recreation, and Dance at the Association's two thousand and twenty-two conference, where she won the High School Physical Education Teacher of the Year for the State of New York. The award recognizes one teacher from across New York State who demonstrates leadership, has a reputation of exemplary work, is committed to her students, and to quality high school physical education. So on behalf of your students, your colleagues, the administration, and the Board of Education, Chris, congratulations on a well-deserved award.
Thank you.
Chris Shudrum, we have a self-proportion of our appreciation for your incredible work. We're so grateful for your incredibly long and career and everything you've done for our students, all your creativity, the new things that you've developed over time to respond to their needs. I can't think of anyone who's worked here. So congratulations. No, no, it's. And he was so despised by the union because of his weight shot that they kicked him out because his work ethic was so high people believed in. And he had a short time lunch stint with DOT. Another proof that he couldn't see them all the way. So he ended up beating Bill Witt, who's a good aggressive man. And Bill knew Dan because he lived with him. And he saw him at Hollis Speedway one night and said, hey, I've got a job for you. Are you interested? And that's how he came here and started the job in October twenty-sixth, nineteen ninety-eight. Our driver at the time, and I wasn't here just before I started, had a heart attack. So he, for the first four months, drove the van for more R C and did the deliveries. And until Diane retired in February. And so Dan kind of defined the role and straightened the lines out of the fields and all that kind of stuff squared everything up. And just he put his touch on everything. He was always forty-five minutes early when I started in the end of August of ninety-nine because again, we had, I worked with Dan for three years, line of fields, plucking grass. And he's always was, he always had to kind of like chase someone, you know? If he was pulling the manure spreader and you were raking grass, he would go just out of your reach, you know what I mean? To keep, to set the pace. And that was very impressive. He is, he, over the, over the year, twenty-four years, he has, he never threw anything away, but a single piece of steel, everything is refabbed, repurposed. Now, there's just his work ethic. And again, he's worked with a lot of people here, Bill and Matt Libra, both the years he had at twenty-four years. Build Dan shoes is one of the things I, I think I read in the beginning before the post-heating out. And I'm gonna say from working with Dan, nobody's gonna build shoes, you know? We're gonna replace them, but nobody, nobody's gonna do it again. And he was just really, really out of luck. So we wish him well. He's been well-deserved and he's gonna start the new chapter of being retired. And I know he's got a new granddaughter and a lot of other new stuff going on here as well. So we wish him well. And so, you know, I know he's saying, he's saying he's working with Dan has really been a pleasure because as Doug said, he can basically fix anything. Like the equipment takes a beating on your wood and it's blowing snow and all those kinds of things that it brings him. Somehow he fixes it out with a whole piece of metal, adds it back together, and he gets the things running. And he does it, and he did it. And now, same just happened. And he was just a, has been a really great pleasure to work with. Like he said, his work ethic sets the example. So we're really grateful for him and wish him very well. So thanks, man. So next up, one of our nurses is retiring in January, Chris Beretot. And again, so grateful for the work that Chris has done. Has been a really integral part of our year sixteen team that has grown over the years and especially the last two years of COVID. They've been absolutely crazy for them. But she, as she always said, has risen to the top, took care of things, and has been a leader for her group. And so again, we're really grateful. But Matt Libra will speak on her behalf.
So I have to be honest. So not that I would get. When Brian and I ran into each other just at the table there before, and he said, okay, you're gonna do this order, this order? I was like, oh, no, I have to give a speech tonight. And I had it prepared, but I think subconsciously in my mind, I was kind of just pushing off your retirement and not thinking about it. I really wasn't at the forefront of my mind because when I started here as the Director of Health, Design, and Athletics, shortly after I began, I took over the supervision of the nurses. And I just have so much respect for Chris and the work that she's done because she has always been steady. She's been through a lot. And I should say, a lot was pushed towards her. We went through everything from COVID, as you mentioned, to the removal of exemptions for vaccinations and just a lot in the short time that she's been with us here. So we've had the privilege of working with Chris since two thousand and seventeen when she began with the district. Since her hire, she has filled the role of nurse at Macular Conception School, a local appropriate school that we have here in our district. And that was after spending several years in the clinical hospital setting and various roles over the years. And I always think that her role at Macular Conception was very fitting since her and her husband Gene are both members of the church over there. So Chris has always, I know, had a love for the profession of nursing and helping people by MLC. Her role is almost a duty of service to the church as well, fulfilling that side of her life. Chris transitioned from delivering babies to delivering dandates and eating those magic ice packs and essentially comfort for hundreds of students and even staff that passed through her office over those years. I spoke to, I had the privilege of speaking to some staff over there, and they didn't have a loss of words when it came to speaking about Chris. And one of the resounding comments that was made is not only was she a great nurse, reliable, confident in what she was doing, but I think people miss her most as a friend over there. Just a lot of close relationships here developed for sure. Over half of Chris's tenure was spent during COVID years. And we commonly joked around that, we called it the Da Vinci COVID because of the complexity of rules and regulations that were passed down from the C E C, the New York State Department of Health, New York County Department of Health, and all three of them being similar yet different and trying to figure out what rules took precedence. And really because she had the concern for safety for students first and foremost and always wanted to make sure she was doing the right thing. I think I can speak on her behalf and say, I think the only time she'll ever want to hear the word tracing ever again might be when she's in a tropical setting, taking a beginning, our class somewhere, and deep into retirement. So Chris, it's because of you that so many families have sent their children to Macular Conception over the past five and a half years have done so with confidence and comfort. And in turn, we hope that you can carry your own confidence into the comforts of retirement. So I know that you may have an immediate void that you might experience, but I know that you'll fill that with family, friends, and your grandbaby. On the way. So thank you very much. We certainly appreciate all the years that you've given to us. You've done such a wonderful job.
Up next, I will be speaking on behalf of Doug Wicks. He's been with the district as well. Doug, he has been with the district for more than twenty-three years. He has custodied and worked his way up to Director of Buildings and Grounds in two thousand and seventeen. And it's been a true pleasure to have the opportunity to work with Doug for the past nineteen years that I've been with the district. Doug's commitment and his work ethic are truly second to none. Willing to put in whatever it takes to get the job done, and he does it, and he always has in an effortless way. I'm always away, I'm always amazed by how well the buildings and grounds are maintained. Never complains. Is always going above and beyond to ensure that things always come smoothly. From preparation to homecoming to the latest snow catastrophe, Doug is often here at four a.m. and at eleven o'clock at night. Doug is someone who I consistently relied on. He is steady, trustworthy, and devoted, true professional in every sense of the word. I'm going to miss him and consider him to be a great one. Congratulations, Doug, on behalf of the board, your administrative colleagues, and all of your colleagues throughout the district who wish you very well.
All the other presentations had a hug.
In their final recovery, this is a tough one. This is Jackie Walker. Jackie started with us in nineteen eighty-seven. And during her time, she has worked with seven superintendent, seven at least seven, and no one deserves that. No one deserves that. She has done it incredibly well. But seriously, I'm so grateful to have had the opportunity to work with her. She is the reason that I have survived the superintendency for the past twelve years. Her history of the district, attention to detail, and amazing work ethic helped me to navigate the many challenges of my position. She has been a great listener, a confidant, and someone who I trust completely. A consummate professional, always treating everyone with respect and dignity. They say that everyone is replaceable, but not in this case. I know we will find an excellent replacement, but I don't think there's anyone who will perform the job with quite the same level of devotion and expertise. Jackie, thank you for sticking around as long as you have, for all the laughs, and for the wonderful friendship we share. I'm very happy for you, but sad for myself. Congratulations. Well, thanks again, and congratulations, Chris, and to all our retirees. You know, we're so grateful for your work. Chris, you continue to do amazing things for us. People are retiring, have done, you know, just an incredible job. We're so fortunate to have a team that we do, and that's why we're able to do the great things we do for kids because of the people we have working for us. And I know for me, these are always really bittersweet, for sure. I'm really happy for you and that you're on to the next part of your journey, but we are certainly going to miss you. No question about it. So congratulations again. So the only other thing I wanted to bring up under my comments is just a board administrative retreat. We talked about it and, excuse me, we talked about it and we kind of put it back where it ended. During COVID, it was pretty difficult. So just wanted to put that out there, like, maybe think about it for next, next year to discuss your intentions or put out thoughts. Thank you very much. We've been talking about it, but you know, because of COVID, we really had to pull it together. And even the schedule prior to that was really crazy, so we're gonna have to postpone. So, but I think there's some things that we definitely want to speak about. And so I guess what I would do is, you don't even have to answer right now, but maybe for January, we will want to come up with some topics that you're interested in or we think that we can discuss or you need more information on. So if anybody has any thoughts right now.
Remind me, Brian, did we have a retreat and it was scheduled and then we never went through all the information? So we still have that, all of that work product from that retreat?
Yeah, so two different times.
Right.
We had the retreat planned, and both times it was canceled due to weather. Once was weather, and the other time it was bringing in COVID.
I think it was bringing in COVID.
Right. So twice we had one planned and then it canceled.
And when we say planned, it was actually all done. So we could go back to that material, update it, so we didn't have to, even if we wanted to just go forward with that. I don't remember what our topics were about.
It wasn't, we weren't given the topic. Mark had the topic. It was completely planned, but it wasn't one that he wanted everyone to know ahead of time because that was part of the retreat.
All right.
I don't know where Mark just went to. Maybe, it may be a little bit three years old at this point, so it may want to.
Yeah, so I don't know if it's just maybe something that I'm saying, might be something, so it's not, if it's something we thought was important back then, we probably want to revisit to see what it was, see whether or not it's something we need to update or do we want to just leave it at something.
Yeah, if it's, if it's something that Mark thinks can be updated and is still relevant, then I'd be, I'd be game for taking that on. Otherwise, I would be interested in hearing from MISBA, what options are, because I know that you had had conversations last year with them.
There you have it lined up. Yep, I had lined up the representative who is going to come in as well. So that's another option. Yeah, that was a totally different retreat than the one that Mark.
And, and I guess I would think we would, we would look to Mark first, and if that's the, if that's the right thing to do, if that still makes sense, then go with that. But then consider for future ones, bringing in MISBA.
From what I recall, last we had talked about potentially one board retreat and one board administrative retreat. So we could do board-specific development and then more full teamwork because everyone's still open to.
MISBA would probably focus on, on board leadership, but it needs to be organized, new ideas. So we could do maybe two, just this group and then one for us.
And I think in the past, we tried to do it before budget season. So it would happen.
Yeah, I would, hopefully that may be something in like February or March. I think in this one, you could probably set these parties as long as your schedule allows because they already have it prepared. So maybe we could do, maybe, maybe MISBA will come in in January and we could find something for that. Let's try that. Okay, very good. All right. I guess that's it.
All right, thank you. Moving on to item seven, board presidents and board member comments. The policy committee met again since our last meeting, and we have policies to review and approve for first and second readings tonight. Thank you, Stan U, Mr. Cassidy, Mr. Reddy, Ms. George, and Mr. Reddy is always leading the charge. I congratulate all our retirees and Mrs. Shudrum, who are all on except for Mr. Wicks. I feel much more whiny than Mr. Russ, and I don't want anyone to be sad to recognize all the hard work that you've done. Mr. Wicks and Mrs. Walker especially, I think that the long tenure of our board members can be attributed to folks like you and the hard work you do on the part of the district. You make it so much easier, Mrs. Walker especially, you make it so much easier for us to serve and participate and be engaged and do our jobs correctly. I frankly don't know what we're going to do without you, but I'm so grateful for all the efforts that you've put in and your patience with all of us, your patience with the process and how cumbersome it is often gotten truly through the middle.
This is a letter for one, so I have that. This is the product. All right. Mr. Cassidy.
I have all seven.
Extra cupcakes for everyone. Mr. Flower.
I don't want to ruin this. This is going to be short because I have a lot. But PA students representing the Blue Devil Design and the Rocket Club recently made presentations. Students from the Rocket Club discussed the American Rocketry Challenge and answered several questions very impressively. As we are with the Blue Devil Design, the students discussed the, well, among other topics, the product line and marketing strategies. It was very interesting. That presentation been one to see. I just want to share that with the group, that's all.
Thank you very much.
I'll just comment on that very quickly. I was at their open house yesterday, Blue Devil Design had their open house yesterday, and a lot of the retirees came. They were buying a lot of stuff. And so they, they had, they had created these candles out of pieces of wood. They created cutting boards, they had ornaments, glasses, all of it. And just in a few months, they designed all of these things using the new Sublimation printer. It's just really, really a way that they had been able to do this much in such a short period of time. And then they can talk you about the whole process. It just went so well, and we're so excited and grateful to the foundation who provided us with a very significant grant to support the program. But it is off and running, and they sold out of most of their product. Yeah, I think they had twelve cutting boards and like ten of them sold. Really great. Yeah, so they did a tremendous job. Thanks for the road. They were there.
Thank you. Well, I want to add my congratulations and my personal thanks to Mr. Wicks. Doug, it's been a pleasure working with you these years. I, many of you know, I've been involved in a lot of projects associated with schools, and often the projects required lots of help from Doug in various buildings that we've, we've worked on. Apparently, we're, we're working on another one relating to this outdoor classroom, and Doug has been a terrific helper to all those things. So thank you for, and best wishes in your next retirement. And this Walker, I can't let this go without saying thank you to you. Jackie was Superintendent Secretary when I was still teaching and working as a part-time administrator, and I used to stop by her office just about every day to chat because she's so easy to talk to, and she always gives such good advice. And we're both hypochondriacs, so we can misericordly each other with regard to all the germs that we're blowing around. And we still do that. So Jackie, thank you, thank you for all that. And for my, my ten years as board president, thank you for all the work that you did working directly as board president in, in the search and employment of two different superintendents during those ten years. So, so without your help, it would have been very difficult for me to be a board president. So thank you again and best wishes.
Thank you so much. And I just want to join in wishing all the retirees who graduated, Mrs. Shudrum, and that's what she's told. And I attended with Mr. Brunson on December ninth, our safety committee meeting, which was very productive. We went through at the high school, they, the high school and the middle school had pushed off their evacuation drills on reasons of the weather. Mark Dale was able to do their drill, and they did a wonderful job. So they were very pleased with how that went. They went to absolute care and everything went out, and the kids were all, you know, everything went well. So let's see, we had, there was an incident with a school bus, and so the students were all checked out. No students were injured, and we had, and they had an opportunity to look at how they handle incidents after school. And they're also working on standardizing what to do in different bus accidents and having all that, right? So this was a good learning opportunity for, for the district. We talked building and grounds. There was discussion about the doors, and there's still. We talked building and grounds, um, there was discussion about the doors and they're still working on, um, the door notifications. There are going to be 32 additional doors that are going to be added to, um, the door notifications. That's just a work in progress, so it's just one of the things that they're addressing. They, um, the storm did not have any damage, we didn't have any damage from this past storm and all of our equipment seemed to work fine, um, at the storm, from the storm, during the storm. Um, with athletics, there was a discussion just about, um, expectations and working with the chaperones to make sure that, you know, everybody's on the same page in terms of that. We also had a discussion about making sure that, um, the doors are being checked, especially at the high school throughout the day. Um, the doors aren't being left untouched, so that was just one of the discussions. Uh, with respect to technology, uh, just discussion about cybersecurity, uh, making sure we're having, we're getting redundant backups. And there's the cybersecurity training, phishing tests, and I'm sure you both discussed that. And then, uh, with respect to new business, we had, um, all, all pairs consulting was there at the meeting and just a general discussion about what they're doing in terms of just looking at, um, going through the district, looking, um, at all the buildings and the district safety plan and, um, making different recommendations. I covered, anything else?
Good, thank you.
So I think that was it, so it was very impressive, so that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, now we're moving on to item eight, administrator comments. Administrator's to address the board this evening. All right, thank you, oh, wait.
Briefly, sorry to interrupt.
Oh, sorry.
Uh, just, we, we had some great concerts over the past week. Uh, we combined with Parkdale last Thursday with an orchestra concert and all at once had great, sort of great up on stage. Uh, and it was just really a tremendous performance. And then just the past Tuesday, we got our band. Um, one of the things that I love to see is in between the fifth and sixth and the seventh, eighth grade bands, we have a middle school jazz band. So, um, a school that will lead into the high school jazz band and, uh, even the vice versa, we're going, uh, which was exciting.
He did a great job too, with the speaking parts and everything.
Oh, I just, I let him in off the roof.
Yeah, I, I figured.
So, uh, and then we had, uh, as I'm sure you, you probably seen, a visit by Jordan Porter. And we found out, uh, 25 minutes before he was arrived and he was here to visit a, uh, sixth grade student of ours who had written a letter to him. And, uh, it was a surprise to everybody, even the news outlets that were literally running the door out of breath because they didn't want that. And, uh, it was really nice, we had this really small, uh, gathering planned in, in the office and he said, no, I want to go do a class and walk back to class. And, um, I would just say it was, uh, inspirational even for me as, as an adult, uh, not being a Bills fan or anything like that, but just, uh, someone of his stature connecting with the sixth grader and how he connected with them. Um, that's just going to impact this, this young man for the rest of his life. And he was invited to the A's past weekend and, uh, got to go out and feel that first. And, uh, I was in his family because of Jordan and his family too, so. Uh, really exciting, uh, spur of the moment event that surprised us all, but we really had to.
Thank you.
I, I do want to share with you, I think, from Parkdale Middle School, that actually the teacher shared with me, I happened to be with one of the teachers and they were just telling me, you know, they were just catching up on things. And they did this collaborative project with our professor, uh, Indian Family Sciences class, uh, where the, the kids were reading a book, uh, about monsters in first grade. And so they designed the monsters, they drew them. They sent them over to the seventh graders who then created them in the class. They, they, they made, for their sewing, for their sewing unit, they took the design and then they actually cut all the pieces from fabric, put it all back together, stuffed it and did all the sewing that they needed to do. And then they took those back to the first graders. Uh, and it was just such a great, uh, way to connect, you know, big brother kind of thing. It was just really nice, it was a, a great project about all signs, you know, and so, um, she was very excited, this first grade teacher I was speaking to, she was just telling me about it and I thought it's just a great collaboration, I'm grateful they're doing that and it's really cute.
And it turned out so well.
Designs were awesome and then the fact that they could, I looked at the design and then I looked at the, the actual stuffed animal and wow, it's an amazing job.
And then on that statement, on our visitation, we had the opportunity to see, um, them working on it. So it was really, it was very cute.
Pictures on our social media, both Parkdale Middle Schools, Facebook, Instagram.
Those monsters keep coming back to school, so the kids really love them.
Their buddy needs school buddy. Thank you very much. Anyone else? All right, thank you very much, thank you for being here. Community comments, this is the portion of the meeting where we invite the community to address the board. We ask folks to sign up for the dance, and Mrs. Horning, did you have?
If I could please, yes, thank you.
Do you like to join us at our new table?
Oh, I can do that. I don't get a microphone, I'll speak loudly. So I also attended the BDD, uh, congratulations to students, I gotta give kudos to my son who did manufacture those cutting boards and they sold out in the first hour. So, and yeah, kudos to, uh, Mr. Craig, Mr. Wall and, um, Ms. Murphy, I think that's how you pronounce her name. I'll give it that. Uh, just had a question on the follow-up I hadn't received, I sent an email on the Austin Air. Um, I haven't been in any classrooms to see if they are on full time, 24/7.
I thought I, I thought I sent you a response if they are, I saw.
We, we got the response, so I think Mr. Russ sent you a response, hopefully.
Either way, they are. So anyway. Both faculty and also the evening of the study.
If some are following up, even though they're been, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
I mean, we're coming into that season, so, um,
Yep.
Also, I had sent, uh, uh, some information regarding the New York State Supreme Court, uh, making masks unconstitutional and subject by law that no child is to wear a mask and it is unlawful force, uh, via the lawsuit for Michael DiMietrio in January. Uh, just wondering if we could, if I could get a follow-up on what your thoughts are going to be going forward because it is supposedly per district, so it's going to be maintained local. So I'd like to, you know, like to hear some information, uh, forthcoming prior to something happening, um, what the district plans on doing. Um, also I noticed that there's, uh, emergency culvert replacement going on at that high school.
Yep, it's completed, yeah, it's completed.
Oh, it's completed?
Yes.
Very good, because I saw the, the bill out for today. Um, was that the update to revise? Because I see the agenda was revised from what we.
No, that wasn't part of it, that wasn't, yeah, that's not the issue, yeah.
Okay, because it's dated today, so that's why I wondered. But, uh, oh, um, so I received a call from Mr. Lombardo regarding, uh, the incident of the intoxicated and under the influence parents from Sweet Home from that past home game. Um, I could get your reply, appreciate that. I was just wondering, is there, uh, administration required at home games? I was told by another coach that there was, but, and that coach is pretty well by the book. Um, so I just wondered on that.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's not a requirement, typically there is an administrator at almost all home games.
Like what's mine, anything, you know?
Yeah, so it's, you know, um, they, they, typically there is an administrator at, at most home games. Um, sometimes it's not possible and that's why we have our chaperones as well. Mr. Lombardo just sent me, um, he just happened to be working on a, a new guidance document for our chaperones. He's been working with them in terms of like, you know, just again, what is your role, uh, those kinds of things? What do you do if there's a situation like that that's disruptive?
That was, it was scary.
Yeah, right, and so, you know, what's the response, you know, and so he's working on that, you know, chaperones? The administrators are there almost? Mr. Roberts, I mean, uh,
I think the only thing I would say is there, there's, um, I think the given night, you think the spring and the fall and the winter, there's, there are going to be upwards of three to four events, um, on campus. So not possible for you to be at every single event, um, but we do the best we can.
Can I recommend, kudos to that, the Sweet Home students? Um, he shared with our students, um, an apology. He waited for our student to come out of the school to apologize for the scene that his father created. I think something should be sent and, you know, kudos to this kid. And instead, one of the statements he said to, uh, our player was that, you know, the only time I see my dad is when he does this. So I think the kid really, you know, I think it would mean an awful lot coming from here, um, to send something appropriate. Kudos to the kid for.
He shared too much what we do at the school.
Yeah, I understand, but, you know, special, something special for him because of what he had at, for his kid.
Thank you, Mrs. Horning. I don't know that, I don't know the particulars of the conversation with the school, but I know that, um, the district has, districts in general have a regular habit of, um, calling out and, and providing that positive feedback. The coaches do it, they, they talk to each other and they share when they see the kids doing a positive thing. Um, thank you very much for bringing that to our attention, um, appreciate that one and, uh, yeah. I, I would like to remind the board that we received a number of, um, emails. Um, I do want to point out that, that the board has, as everyone in the district has been cautioned to not click on any links that are, are sent without a wrapper or details. So I would suggest to anyone wishing to address the board that we please get, um, content and emails, not just a link sent because, um, unfortunately, we, we can't, we can't click on them, that's, that's bad news for everybody and, uh, thank you. Yes, following the rules, do not click links, folks do not click on links unless you know the source that you are going to. Um, Mrs. Horning did send us, um, emails in, uh, November and earlier in December regarding the air purifiers, um, the basketball game that we talked about, uh, the masking, um, the, the issue we have, the topic of, um, and then turf options. And then we also received an anonymous email regarding cleaning, cleaning precautions in COVID. You all received, and we're here, yes?
I do.
Thank you very much, thank you. Uh, moving on to item 10, business office.
Work and financials.
Hi, yes, I have some good news to share tonight. Um, I'm happy to report that we received the majority of our Smart Schools Bond Act reimbursements, um, this month. Uh, $580,000 of it. And, um, we weren't able to file until we received this, the second portion, which is about $83,000. And that's been filed for. Also, I'm happy to report that we have filed, I have to give a lot of kudos to my administrative assistant, Jennifer Eppenheimer. Um, we have filed five projects with FEMA regarding COVID. It's been quite an arduous process, but she doesn't give up. I don't give up either and we revise, revise, revise. Uh, the total that we have submitted for is $437,000. Um, we're hoping to get reimbursement on all of it, but we still don't know what will be reimbursed for. Our financial reports tonight are as of the end of October. Uh, we had, um, $20.2 million in the bank, which is reflective of tax collections. Um, we had expended approximately 20% of our budget and received about 69% of our revenues. Um, and our cafeteria fund again, I must caution, I really think that there's a delay going on. The revenues are being reported, but we haven't received the invoices. Um, so revenues over expenditures are $67,000 at this point in time. But again, I caution because I don't think that we've received our expenses. Federal fund is coming along as we would predict, nothing really to report there. And, um, the capital fund, um, we just had the capital housing project ongoing at the high school.
Uh, we have a grid, um, just going to show that up to you. So the good news is the grid continues to be boring, which is exactly what you want it to be. Um, one of the things I've been told is, you know, the first six months, you try not to overspend and then the next six months, you try to save everything you can. So we're kind of at that sick point coming through the December bill. You'll see that we are, um, slightly ahead of the game in terms of the budget, um, but without any significant savings. But the good news is without any significant unexpected expenses. So there's just a couple of things I want to call your attention to. Salaries, benefits, equipment, supplies, contractual textbook, um, you'll see if some of those are zeros, those are just things we haven't realized any savings yet, but again, we're not over. Um, for some of those, you're going to see we're trending slightly in the good direction. Um, but again, you know, it's, it's small amounts either way. I do want to call your attention to, um, BOSI's, uh, the big bill is going to hit in February, so one side or the other, a couple are coordinating. Um, we're not anticipating that to be a surprise, but that's what actually started this whole grid many years ago when that bill was a surprise. So it just, that's a number that, don't feel either way about it until the February bill hits, okay? But, um, everything's good there. Uh, in terms of the revenue, the same, um, January, we'll have our final number on the property text and that's pretty much penalties and interest, again trending positive. Um, state aid, uh, it's supposed to actually be loaded tomorrow, so this meeting was two days from now, we have a better idea on state aid. Um, so that's still zero, we'll, we'll have our first glimpse of what we're expecting then. Um, if it is significantly one way or the other, I'll, I'll do an income kind of email as work to all of you. Um, but that should be loaded tomorrow by the state, it will know where that is. Um, when it comes to Erie County sales tax, again, we haven't, we've only received our first payment. Um, it does look, you know, slightly trending positive. Last year, that was where we kind of got our big windfall, we're not expecting a big windfall this year. Um, in fact, if anything, you're going to notice over the last two, four years I've done this, we've kind of been able to find one area where we were able to realize significant savings, um, just due to the economic conditions, but also that Joanne is, is running tighter and tighter budgets. Um, we're not expecting a major, um, you know, half a million dollar nut to crack anywhere here. So we're running much more true, which is really, really good. However, that also prevents, um, you know, if there is an unexpected surprise, one way or the other, um, it's, it's, we're going to feel a bit more, as of now, we're not worried about that. Um, I will say, uh, you will notice for the federal COVID funds, we're falling behind in between the received and spent, but that's just an accounting thing. We do have a reimbursement out there for just under $350,000. Um, that will cover the rest of that, that's just a lag between what you spend and when we get money back. That's flowing away as should, um, and much more regularly. If I remember Smart Schools Bond Act, you were supposed to get the money within, what, 90 days or 100 days?
It's a bit long.
Seems more like 90 months, if, if not. This money actually is flowing, but that's just, you'll notice that there's that gap there and that's just simply when we sent the bill to the state versus when we get the money back. I will say overall, and you'll see the rest of the staffing is, is the same, just on the money card. Right now, you know, we're projecting to be about $100,000 to the good, which, you know, personally is a really good thing, but in a $42 million budget, almost $43 million budget, it's a razor thin margin. Um, again, everything we've done, we've not overspent the budget, but what we need to do is find ways to work within that budget because even though we are 96 to the good, remember that first 461 is spoken for, um, you know, potentially for the next year's budget with the unbalance. Um, personnel, staffing is the same. The only thing you may turn your eye to is, uh, we're having a little bit of a flux with teacher A numbers and it seems to be flexing upward. Um, some of that is just due to some timing and overlapping positions. I am meeting with the assistant principals to kind of get that number understood under control. It's not bad, but just anytime, you know, we see an increase three months in a row, um, obviously calls our attention to it. It, there's nothing, some of it's going to work itself out and then the rest is what can we do to work that number? Um, but other than that, that's the number and it's, again, the good news is, um, the more this grid is boring, the better our job we're doing. So that's kind of where we are.
So what does that number represent, 2155, so?
How many hours per week?
Hours per week. Hours allowed per week. Um, it's a lot of hours.
And there's no, currently that we don't have, all the positions that we have are filled, correct?
Yes, a, yes, well, or very shortly, there'll be a couple like retirements and stuff where, yes, yes, yes.
Is that, or soon.
Other questions? Thank you very much. Here, on to item B, plans for 2023, 2024, project development?
Yeah, so, uh, today's like our first discussion, so the presentation's pretty, pretty basic. Uh, and so, uh, then here's the agenda, it's going to talk about our vision and our values, our per people, take a look at per people expenditure, uh, and then just the budget development calendar and then we'll have a discussion about how we're going to, how we're going to address it. Um, getting some, some good information from the state in regard to not expecting any reductions. Foundation aids continue to come through, so all of that's pretty much promised. Uh, and some, maybe some discussion about some additional aid for schools, but I think that's, that's way off.
It's pretty.
Yeah, yeah, that's way off. So, yep, and so. It's hard to make decisions on, it's not, yeah, there you go. That's a hidden critical word. It's not hard to make decisions when you know what your values are. And we've been working with our values and vision for the last about seven, seven years now. It's been a long time. And it's really helpful to kind of guide our decision making, you know, and kind of go back to why we're here and focuses around our students. And that's how our values were developed. And then the vision for any particular year kind of ebbs and flows as we go through the process and we determine the needs of our students and our staff.
Is here for me, Roy, this week?
I wish.
Yeah, I wish, yeah.
Did you?
I'll tell you, by the way.
So the tricky triangle of budgeting. Again, here we go, identify priorities, establish goals, and then we balance the trade-offs, right? It's back and forth, and you know, we even look at some of the things that we were planning to do this year. Some of them have moved forward, some of them we backed off a little bit. Because again, things change as we go through the process. We make adjustments and determinations that we need to sometimes hold off on. And, but in general, things are going along nicely. A lot of new programming for our students, a lot of new supports in terms of mental health and wellness. And so we spent off to a really great start. And so, and Ford for supporting all of those many challenging decisions. So yeah, so we look at per people expenditures, and this is always an important piece for us. And they changed the formula just like this month. And so Joanne was talking to me about it, and what does it look like? So they've done it a little differently, so this is the first take on it. This may change as we get more information as these professors.
Has to do with transparency reporting and with the de-asset reporting. And they're just reporting based differently, so the state is doing the comparison.
Right. So we continue to be below average in Erie County. And then we look across all New York State school districts, significantly below the average per people expenditure. So I would say we're getting a good bang for our buck. We're doing a lot for our students, and we're doing it at a very reasonable cost.
Does this include costs associated with the federal money? Or is it strictly the general fund budget?
No, when we do transparency and asset reporting, it's a cross-sell funds, every year a cross-sell funds.
And so here, this is kind of where we're at. It's just like, bunch starts really in January. Hopefully, we'll have some information. Again, that one is kind of hit or miss, depending on how the governor moves through the process. Like I said, you know, I did get some information that the talks are off to a good start. But you know how that goes, right? And next week, it'll fall apart. So we don't know what will happen in January, but once we get to February, things will start to click. And you can see we'll have a number of budget workshops in the beginning, like from January, February, March, will be all budget development. When we get to the end of March, we'll be tightening it up, and we'll probably be really close to being ready to move forward. We'll get together in April. Of course, we have April break in there. And we have to, Joanne's, Joanne's office has to report out the property tax report cards and all that stuff that you guys are aware of. And then we all vote on May 16th. Everybody across the state all votes on the same day. So again, here it is, it's just kind of start the conversation. We don't really have any information to share. But I'll just open it up to questions, any concerns or thoughts you'd like to think about as we develop our budget for this year.
So anyway, Mr. Brunson, so I think what we're looking for right now at our new board member would be questions about process at this point.
Yeah, and some kind of umbrella concept associated with developing budgets as well. I don't have any particular questions, but just a suggestion for something to keep in mind as we move forward with developing budgets. This is the last year for spending federal money, which looks to be about a million dollars more than will be expended during the 23, 24 school year of the budget that we're talking about developing. It's also the last, the 23, 24 year is also the last year that we have commitment from the state for implementing the full foundation aid over a three-year period. So we've had two years now of increased foundation aid, substantial increase in foundation aid. And we've had this influx of federal money. What's going to happen at the end of the 23, 24 year, when we're preparing for the 24, 25 budget, is there's going to be this drop off in increase from the state. So I think we need to be cautious that we're going to have probably very little of any increase from the state in the 25 budget. And at the same time, we're going to have a shortfall of about a million dollars in revenue that we're spending in the 23, 24 year on the federal side. And so I think as we develop this budget coming up, we need to keep that in mind so that we don't fall off a cliff at the end of the 23, 24 budget and so that we have a transition plan to go through to the following years' budget. It would be tempting to do this coming year's budget, taking all that money into consideration. So if you say, oh, well, look, we can do this, we can do that because we have expenses. But then we will, in my view, suffer a very significant loss the following year. So I, so I just think that as we plan and as we work together as finance committee and as a board, that we need to take that into consideration and develop a transition plan to account for these changes.
And Joanne, this is already started in process, so you know, she's looking at how do we transition the cost over the next couple of years so that it's as smooth a transition as possible.
Well, I know you have plans to do that, which is great, you know, but I think we need to make sure that those plans are actually working, you know, and that we haven't diverged from the original plan because of need, you know? I mean, it's, heaven knows, we have significant need. And we've been accommodated in some of those needs. But we also have to prioritize the needs as we move forward because the resources may dry up.
Would it be possible to look at projecting two years, to do a two-year plan in this budget cycle? Instead of, instead of one at a time? We're never going to have the full, fully clear crystal ball, but we know some of the drops and stuff.
Well, and we also know, because we have contracts now with our, with our various staff associations, that I think we can predict some of our expenses over that two-year period. So it won't be as problematic as it might otherwise be to try to brainstorm what the future calls for.
So two, two years, planning, planning for the clips and transition. Do you think early on we could possibly see, and it could, maybe it falls off the presentation? Side thought, we see the same presentation a lot of times. I know that we owe it to our community members to see the full presentation. Would it be possible to not see the same thing? All of those, they all exist in the, they can exist in the deck, but if we don't, we need to remember. Just a thought.
And simplify your statement.
Yes, or exist, like this, I love Tori Disney's quote. And our values, I think they're very important. I think we all know that we're, those are the foundation of all of the work that we do. I think it, it loses its punch a little bit when we just keep linking it.
Well, especially when we're talking about ourselves, when we're as bored debating and discussing potential changes in the budget, we don't necessarily need those repetitions of points. But when we're addressing the community, I think it's essential that we do the whole.
I think, I think when we get into true budget season after the holidays, we should, we should have presented fully at a couple of points along the way. We might not need to present it fully in every workshop. What I think we could see in this seat earlier on might be the, that list of our hopes and dreams for the years. Where are we in it and what's starting to fall off because we've already accomplished it or it is no longer a need? I think if we could see that list early, that would be helpful.
That was actually going to be like my hope, suggestion, comment, that we could definitely have that again this year. Last year, we did the 19, the school year, 19 to 20, and all the way up to this current year. So if we could continue that process, that would be great, because that really, really helps, I think, all of us.
And then it gives you the opportunity to tell us why, why something's off the list or how the, how the need has been addressed or is no longer needed. What else?
I'm dying to turn this on. So, so looking at the tricky triangle, which shout out to Pocono Raceway for all the NASCAR fans out there. Identify priorities, one thing that we had talked about last year, and then I think President Armbrus and I spoke at the convention about it as well, was a thought exchange, an opportunity to get input from the community. And I had found one that Dupuy had put out on their website last year. I think they had done it later in the budget process. And I think it'd be more helpful to do it earlier on in the budget process. Is the, the thought exchange, I remember during COVID, one was sent out to the public. I remember thinking how great it was that people were able to add their own items and then the rest of the people coming in could sort of thumbs up them, and they would move up. And it would give, give some idea of what's a priority out there. And it's not to say that that would define what we're doing in our budget, but it would help to educate us and it would give us another perspective from the people of the taxpayers.
Thank you for the reminder, and that also reminds me that I forgot to bring up that we were going to talk about what we learned at the convention with the superintendent. So that is on the list to do shortly after the holidays, so we can capture all that information before we lose it. I'm not losing that one.
Yeah, certainly agree with what you said, and wholeheartedly agree with what Mr. Brunson said. I haven't asked the superintendent for some information for the first budget meeting we had. But we know what drives a budget, we know its salary and benefits, and we know there's a cost of BOCs, and we know what our capital expenses are going to be, those kind of things we need to do. And I think some of that stuff needs a little bit earlier, at least I do, so I get a feel for, you know, what new contract settlements really add up to in the next year's budget and how that affects the IRS, TRS, health insurance. Just kind of compartmentalize that, whether it's we start with a professional salary, then the support staff salary, whatever. But once you get a feel for what those increases are, I think you start feeling what the pressure will be on actually getting a balanced budget within the parameters of tax cap, within the parameters of the state aid. So I'm going to request that kind of information. We get a lot of information at the budget workshops or the finance committee. It's, it's, it's good, but I think information like that helps some people, might help another. I've always been kind of, just keep some things a little bit simple and straightforward so you know what you're dealing with dollar wise. The clip is real. Putting together two years of budget is going to be a lot of time and a lot of effort. And Mr. Brunson talked about specifically the foundation aid. That commitment will be met this year coming up, and after that, all bets are off when it comes to foundation aid. So as you put the second year together, understand what you're asking for and evaluate that. But there's going to be so many assumptions that I don't know if it will be worth the time and energy, given the fact that it's going to require so many assumptions, and we're going to be dealing, really dealing with that cliff in time. If you have a million dollars, whatever the salary numbers, because I've asked for salary numbers and the grants too. What's actually going to be moved out of COVID grants into the general fund? So when you see the increase in salaries based on contract settlements, and then move that over as we start talking about priorities and what's on the list, I think we need to feel early on that that may not be an option. I think it won't be an option, but that should be a little bit too negative. But I think we've got to be, we've got to sum that information up front. It doesn't have to be a balanced budget in January or February, because I think there's so many assumptions down. But we do know what drives a budget, and I think we can get a feel for which way we're headed early on. That's my, my take on that.
Thank you. For the, so I'm not asking for a full two-year budget, more of a, more of the information that we need to know what that clip is so that it, I'd like to make it as tangible as possible for the board so we can understand what we're dealing with.
That's really what I asked for a couple of weeks ago. I said, you got the email, correct? And then they have a piece of that, in my, what I would like to see, at least at our meetings, compartmentalize a little bit, look at the professional salaries, see what they look like. Yes, as we work towards the second year, that's kind of what I had in mind a little bit as we put together two years, but not a full two-year, the second year budget without really knowing revenues or anything. But I think we can get to what you're asking for, we're kind of in some of this direction, I guess. If it's not enough, certainly, we can talk more about it. The more we bring to the board meeting on, whatever the first one is, 18th or whatever, we get a start, then they were all on the same page, and they were not.
I hear what you're saying, it's, there's some key, key drivers that we have to watch out for. And maybe I have, I have asked for too big a thing in my oversimplification, but what we really need to know is what gap can we easily project? We know where salaries are going to go, we know where foundation aid is going to stop. We know where the federal COVID funds cease. Those big numbers, what's, what's the negative we're looking at?
Well, I'm on the same page, they're 100%, yeah.
Okay, okay, so I think that's a whole budget yet. Not, not necessarily a full budget, but those, those large, yeah. Thank you, thank you for clarifying.
Well, because the full budget is that whole book.
Right, yes, we don't need the whole.
You know, and it's page after page after page of line items, too much work to try to do two years of that. But it's not too much work to do two years of this.
Yes.
You know, the, the large categories approximated, obviously, it's, it's guesswork for the second year. But you got to do this for the first year anyway. And so, you know, if you know that in the second year, that, that, that the money from the, from the federal money is going to have to go back up into this top line for salaries here, you can take a stab at what that's going to be and, and put it down. And it will give us a better feeling early on. You know, and I know there's a lot of details we can talk about in these, these finance committee meetings. But frankly, I'd rather spend less time talking about the, the calculations for the tax cap as an example, or some other issues that, that are being discussed statewide. And I'd rather spend more time looking at the actual numbers earlier on, if we care.
Yeah, yeah, so I was going to say is that, Stuart's already been working on that. I shared your questions with her, so she's been preparing that report. And again, working on already the transitions from the grants to the federal government, also knowing that while foundation aid isn't going to go down, it's going to stop going up, right? So foundation aid is going to level off, or who knows, maybe a long one, I mean, but you can't count on that, can you? Right now, right now, they're saying that the last year, the increase is going to happen, so that's good news for us. And then we'll have a much larger piece to work with moving forward because foundation aid in general is something that we can count on every year. So once our, once it's established, it shouldn't go down. It's not going to happen. And so those things are, will help Joanne, and then start looking at what do we owe for the contracts? What are the things that we know that we can protect? There's a lot of things that we can't, and that's what, so like what you're saying, again, we'll be able to hit the larger chunks, but the overall budget for the second year is just impossible because of all the moving parts.
But if the larger chunks are, show a real divergence
Yes.
between revenue and expenditures, then we know we've got a problem to work on. And you can work on that in this coming budget to prepare for it so that you save in some categories so that it doesn't hit you all at once in the following.
Or maybe don't get all excited about adding a position that we won't be able to afford.
Well, actually, we're all, we're concerned about, you know, and, and the, the, if this, the, the three increases in foundation aid are wonderful because we'll have that money every year moving forward, but it will not accommodate inflation. So the, so the, the increase in costs associated with our contracts and with other inflationary factors will have to be borne by the local tax because there, we only have certain sources of revenue. So we need to be aware of that so that we don't get out of our original plan, which was to level that tax increase off to a modest levy increase. We've brought it down each year, and it's getting to be right about what seems to be affordable. We don't want it to be back.
Would it be at all helpful for the community to understand which categories of revenue and expenses are impacted by inflation? Which categories are impacted by contractual obligations? And which are completely out of our control and determined by the state? And then the, the amount that is remaining to be covered by the taxpayers, right? I think when, when we, when we try to explain things to the public, we often talk about the household budget, and there are different categories that you can control. the household budget and there are different categories that you can control. I choose if I'm going to add a streaming service or an activity for my kid. I do not choose if the cost of, of goods goes up out in the world, I just choose how much I spend, right? There's some ways that we can make this reasonable for folks to understand what's within and out of our control and what that control means.
Sometimes people react negatively to that kind of an explanation though, because I've, I've had folks say to me years ago, not recently, but say to me that, well, wait a minute now, you're saying the salaries are out of our control because we have contractual agreements. They look at me and say, well, you, you negotiated that contractual agreement, you agreed to this increase, so therefore it was in your control and, and you, and you committed to this change. So, so sometimes if the, the words we use to describe things can backfire or nothing.
Understandable. The things that I would say are out of our control are whether or not foundation aid continues to exist.
Yes.
Right? And, and there is further explanation to things such as contractual obligations that we must pay. What is in our control is how much programming we offer. And then the explanation speaks for itself, right? Now the community gets to decide, right?
Well, the policies is a good thing. And, and one of the things that we've done in response to that year when we had this big $500,000 surprise is that we now look at those specialized placements. And there's a column on the left that we, I look every month, I can't read every single one of those placements because it's just, it's just too much, you know, it's hundreds, hundreds of them. But I do look at that column to see if there is a check mark in, in that column which indicates to us that the placement exceeds the budget. And that is a hint to us to be aware of that, not that we will change the placement, of course, but, but what we would do is now know in advance that, that the placement has resulted, you know, perhaps that includes us. So that's, that's a, that's a, a piece of paper that's similar to this in that it gives us a hint about trends and, and it gives us a heads up so that we can make changes in a time and manner if we need to.
Other thoughts?
I would just ask that, and I'm assuming we would, but this will be up starting now on our website, just so that the community knows that this is, you know, it's already a discussion for the budget. Sometimes we have community members come in later on in the process and think that this is something that we're just beginning. I'd like people to know that already in December, we're starting this process. And I think this was a very thoughtful and productive conversation and a lot of the points that are already for things to be considering as we move forward with the budget.
And this, the budget development presentations live in a handy place on our website? Find them all. Thank you. All right. Moving on to item 10C, funding the repair reserve. Oh, it's not you. Oh, you're going away.
Yeah.
So, so yes, we wanted to talk about the funding of the reserve.
Yep.
So, um, yeah. I will, um, I.
Do you want to, do you want to kick it off?
I do want to kick it off.
Oh, right.
Certainly.
Want to fill everybody in on?
Yeah. Yes, I do want to, I appreciate the kind of fact for changing the agenda on that.
Sure.
And the, the resolution that is, that was presented for a package, and maybe there's a reason why it's written the way it is and the timing of it. And if there is, then we'll, we'll certainly deal with that. I do want to make a few comments regarding that resolution, a few thoughts on that. First of all, I believe that we should have a public hearing before we vote on a resolution to spend money on a repair reserve. And the reason I feel that way, it's relatively simple process. The taxpayers approve the reserve, they finance the reserve, and the last step before we spend it is just give a public hearing explaining why we're using those funds. And that was the resolution presented tonight, I've got a call for that. The, I think it certainly gives the taxpayers at least have a say in what their thoughts are in using the repair reserve. There may not be any. Historically, only here through a business official, I've never had anyone speak at a public hearing. I just, I just like the process over how this, this resolution is laid out, taking account of general municipal law. And that, and also gives, when we do the public hearing, just an additional opportunity for the school board to reemphasize the importance of reserves. We have this reserve, we use it responsibly, not just this reserve, but there's a reason why we ask the public to fund that and why we use excess funds to, to, to fund the reserves. And I think it's a, just an important reminder to the community why we do that. Secondly, the, the original proposition was approved by the voters states that the funding of the reserve would come from unrestricted fund balance. I just think we should stick to that. And I know the resolution calls for paying for a recent project out of the repair reserve, qualifies for, it's a good use of reserve money, but the way this is written, we'll pay it back in the solvency over two years. And I just, I think it takes a little flexibility where I think there's a commitment to putting 21,000 in the next two budgets. And what I'd really rather do, what I, what I recommend, not what I'd rather do, but I'm sorry, but, but I'd rather, I'd rather kind of postpone, you know, amending the budget. I think it's a little early in the process. If it turns out that we have reserve, we have funds above our appropriate fund balance for 4% at year end, we can simply move more money into the reserve. We could absorb this 41,000 in the current general fund, pay for it out of the current general fund if we have excess appropriations. We won't, it's early in the process to identify the fact that we have that. Fund balance management is key. And this, this board, the board previously has done a good job with recommendations that we've had. When you have a reserve, like a repair reserve, you've got a chance to manage the fund balance because they work together. You've got a project, like we have a color project, the expenditure can come out of the repair reserve, that's why you have it. But if you have a strong enough fund balance too, and you've got, you're going to exceed the 4%, why not leave the expense in the general fund, but it brings that appropriate fund balance down to, to 4% and it also leaves all the money in the reserve? So that's really what I think. I'm just thinking about the timing of this resolution, what better information we'll get as we move down the line. That's really where I am with this. It's not certainly a question of the integrity of the resolution. The premise of it is good. I'm just not sure if this is just the right time for the resolution or if we invoke general municipal law as opposed to put it together, just a simple public hearing which really explains the project that was done, how it was. So that's, I appreciate the fact that you say those things and I would just move on from there. I don't want anybody's thoughts on that.
Does anyone have immediate feedback or questions?
Well, I support Mr. Flowers' comments. They, the, I've sat through many, many uses of the repair reserve over the years and years that I've been here. And I don't believe we've ever used the process where you can pay it back over to your, I think we almost always anticipated that a need would occur and have enough in the repair reserve to be able to do it, but we've always had to hear it to have that happen. So, and, and our previous discussion about the problematic circumstances of the next two budgets also leads me to believe that fewer commitments we make or expenditures in those two budgets, the better off we're going to be. And so committing to $20,000 each of those years doesn't sound like much in a big budget like we have, but it's just an example of an early decision that will help us as we budget over the next two years. So I, I support.
And so that I understand, so we can instead of obviously going forward with this and see if we can put this off, is that, is that what we're kind of proposing?
Well, I, yeah.
I mean, I, I agree.
Yes and no. The answer is yes, I'd like to put it off. I wouldn't even want the same wording.
Right. So that's exactly, this whole thing, it would be taken. Okay, that's what I want to understand. So that's what we're proposing. Okay.
What, what this proposes is this commits us to replenishing the reserve.
Right.
That's what.
It commits us to.
Replenishing the reserve.
Yeah.
Yes, it commits us so that it, as opposed to maybe.
And, and Mr. Flowers, are you proposing that we don't use the reserve at all right now unless we find the need to later?
Right. I, I am saying, yes, but I'm also saying.
No, we're using the reserve. He's saying replenish the reserve.
I'm saying may not even do.
May not even be saying.
Because you're saying this year you may have a fund balance that's beyond what you need and therefore you wouldn't have to draw from the reserve for this purpose. But if you did, you could have your hearing to draw from the reserve and you wouldn't have to pay it back.
So, go ahead. So, yeah.
No, and so, so to that point, my, my question was going to be if we don't do this now, can we still do it later on when we find out we don't have the, the, the fund balance and we do need the money from there? So we're not, we're not held to doing this now.
No, I, I'm just thinking, you know, the opportunity maybe like in April or something to at least make that decision.
Replanting.
To do it, and then do the public hearing in May and then just go ahead and make that move. But it looks like the fund balance is strong. What I, what I'm really proposing, if the fund balance is strong, we're over the 4%, leave the expense in the general fund and still move excess over 4% into this reserve. So you kind of got the best of both worlds. You're managing fund balance, you're managing the reserve, and I think that's an option down the road that could be helpful.
So it sounds like what you're proposing is to keep it as flexible as possible.
Flexible is really important. And the other thing too, this is not to be too complicated or anything, but when you set a separate reserve for 500,000, it's not about keeping 500,000 in there. So when we pay back this 41,000, that's a contribution to the reserve. So we've got 209,000 in there now. You move to 41,000, that is up to 250,000. So you finance, you're writing the 250,000 even though you pulled 41 out. But all you could, you could only deposit 500,000 in it. So you do 100,000, 100,000, you pull some out for a project, you can't, that doesn't bring that balance down. It continues to accumulate.
There's no, no subtracting from the five, the total accumulation of 500,000.
And school reserves get caught. And, and where they get caught the most is like in that, we don't have it, but they would have a, a bus purchase reserve. And what they do every year, they buy buses from that reserve and then they replenish it next year. What happens if they replenish it enough, they, they totally exceeded the authorization from there and they give it up. I know we don't have that, but that's the type of example you can deal with in any kind of reserve. You can't.
So the money should not be bouncing in and out of a reserve. You want to put it in there, sit on it until you absolutely need it, then withdraw it.
Yeah, I mean, that's a no. What you don't want to do is put more than 500,000 in over the term.
Then you have to reestablish it. So, once you hit the 500,000, then you have to reestablish, you have to close that one out and establish a new one. But the nature of it is in and out because you want to replenish it so that you have like those kind of emergency dollars when something pops up that needs immediate attention. So it does have a flow, but you have to, like you're saying, well, I mean, we happen to have a lot of excess resources at the end of the year. You could cover the 41 out of the general one if it's beyond the unappropriated fund balance and also add to the reserve
You're right.
Towards that gap.
I'm just saying that time will tell, but I just don't know if December is the right time to tell that, that's all.
Right, right. So we might end up doing this, but it depends or something like it. Depends on what the numbers look like.
And in the process, we would do it would be different because we would do the public hearing.
Yes.
Which is one of the things we're after. So I, I.
And we really want to amend, amend the budget. Typically, you don't amend the budget. This would be a situation where you could, or if you get some major donation to, to be used for a specific purpose, you could amend the budget or the situation we got in where we had some children identified that we didn't have in the budget. But there's not a lot of reason to amend the budget. And 41,000 may or may not be a reason. If there's a reason to, then we're really cutting our budget extremely close to the end of the year, you know what I mean? If this, if this needs to be done out of necessity, then we've got a real file on our hands as we move forward in the budget process. I don't mean to overthink it or overtalk it, it's just things to think about as you move forward in any decision.
And I think exactly what we just talked about in our previous discussion, this is looking at this sort of long-term and kind of trying to evaluate all of these different issues that are going to come up as some of that really comes up.
Exactly right, yeah, exactly right. And this is one of those reserves where it's hand in hand with the general fund. It's a good reserve for that reason, that has stabilized tax levy increases and this is what you can do now, you know? That's what you can do with a strong fund balance, stabilize that.
That's what everyone is using, whatever they had for reserves to get through the GEA years, right?
And that's, and that's a good use of reserves. The whole idea is you, you know, you, you build up reserves in good times, the bad times comes from there. And that's a responsible use, but what happened is those relents, it was year after year. And they got us to, we survived it and now things are in good shape. Just try to keep that position as long as we can.
So we're tabling item equally moved it, is it on the agenda we have to table it?
Well, you can draw it. You can do it as, you can do an, an agenda change, it's that we could draw.
Okay. We, we moved it or changed it, it may not have been the agenda change.
Then you have to table it if you, you already had a motion.
We just, we just, we added, we actually added an item.
Oh, you know, but I, I moved it, I bet someone made a motion.
Oh.
Then you know.
Right, so we don't, we don't have to table.
I moved it out of the paper.
We don't have to table it because no one's made a motion.
Exactly.
Gotcha. Thank you. We withdrew item E, whatever that was. Okay, thank you. Which one? It was E, well, yeah, I know what under, item under 13, 13E was withdrawn. Okay, so we're going back to the process that we followed. Thank you. Thank you very much. Moving on to item, is there anything else in that one? Moving on to item 11, is there any legislation to come forward for? No, sorry. Page two.
We're good.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to item 12, consensus items. Is there anyone who wishes to withdraw consensus item? Hearing may have a motion to approve the consensus. So moved by Mrs. O'Leary. Second. Seconded by Mr. Brunson, discussion. All those in favor? Opposed abstentions carried seven zero. Item 13, items requiring board action. Item A, the superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve for a second reading the policies listed in your agenda as new section 2000. I have a motion.
Move.
Moved by Mr. Brunson. Seconded by Mr. Cass. I'm sorry, Mr. Flowers.
I thought that was your real confidence.
You're welcome. Nothing to do with my slowness at all.
We're worried about those. We're scared of booking.
I was like, it really needs that direction. I think I looked up at Mr. Brunson and then heard Mr. Flowers. Oh, okay. You got it? Great, thank you. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed abstentions carried seven zero. Item B, the superintendent recommends the Board of Education perform a second reading to retire the entirety of the current section 2000 of the current policy manual as detailed in your agenda. I have a motion.
So move.
Moved by, yes.
Okay.
Sorry, Mr. Flowers, too late.
Oh.
Moved by, seconded by Mrs. Daniel. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed abstentions carried seven zero. Item C, the superintendent recommends the Board of Education perform for a first reading the collective new section 9000 as outlined in your agenda. I have a motion. Moved by Mrs. Daniel. Seconded by Mr. Cassidy. Discussion.
Discussion, please. Policy 9,000.03, which is representation to news media. I would ask the committee to relook at that wording. It's the first time we have ever had specific wording that says that an individual board member may not interact with anyone from the media without having been delegated to do so by the board president. That's, that's a big change in policy, which, which means if I get a phone call from which, which means if I get a phone call from someone, I can only say I have, I can't speak because I have not been delegated to do so by the board president. I think it's imperative that when we do speak to the media, that we let them know that we're not representing the district. The board president or the superintendent represents the district. But we should have the ability to talk to people in the media, which whatever media it happens to be, as long as we make it clear that we're expressing our personal point of view as an individual board member and not as representing the entire district. So I would ask the policy committee to relook at that wording and see if you can come up with something that doesn't tie our hands so that every time I have a conversation. I mean, think about it, if you're running for reelection, I wouldn't be able to chat with anybody about anything relating to my point of view as a board member without first calling the board president and asking her to delegate me to be able to do that. So the word delegation is what I object to. And perhaps you can rethink it.
Yeah, that was, that's why we need to minimize in years on end. That was not the intent. So, you know, some of those are good subjects of this. So we definitely will come up. We can make the changes between the first and the second reading. So there will be a new version of that. Let me ask around if I can use a source, look around if I'm going to do that. So yes, the intent is in keeping with what you said, if word is not to sit in.
Thank you. Mr. Brunson, that is exactly how the politics committee works. And we didn't think that thought, so thank you for catching.
About three o'clock this afternoon.
Well caught, well caught. You can only come up with so many scenarios before you miss one. So thank you very much. Other discussion or comments? We can approve the first reading with the proposed language changes.
Subject to change.
Subject to change, yeah. All those in favor?
All right.
Opposed, abstentions carried seven zero. Thank you. Moving on to item D, the superintendent recommends that the Board of Education perform a first reading to retire the entire current section 3000 of the policy manual.
Not, not the entire, just one.
Our current, section 3000 that are, that are outlined in your agenda, these are the ones that are replaced with the new 9000. My apologies. 3000, only those listed in your agenda. Moved by Mrs. Daniel.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cassidy. Discussion? All those in favor?
All right.
Opposed, abstentions carried seven zero. Item E is, you're okay? Okay. Item F. Pause. All ready?
Yep.
All right, we are moving on to item F. The superintendent recommends that the Board of Education accept the results of the December 14, 2022 capital improvement project vote as detailed, 308 yes to 302 no. Capital improvement project says no. Moved by Mr. Brunson. Second, second by Mrs. Brunson. Discussion?
I thought you were just saying that.
We were voting on it. So I'm sorry, that was a vote, that's a vote for a vote. Anything else? All those in favor?
All right.
Opposed, abstentions carried seven zero. Are there any other items to come before the board? Okay, I will remind you that the next regularly scheduled board meeting is January 18, on anticipated 5:45 executive session. The following meeting is Wednesday, February 8. There are upcoming workshops outlined in your agenda. Is there anyone who wishes to request that an item be added to a future agenda?
I kind of do. We talked about the retreats and we talked about it possibly being in January, but our next meeting isn't until January. And Mark was gone when we had this discussion. So I'm not sure if we, if we wait until our January meeting, we're not gonna be able to have a retreat in January.
No, no, the January will be at NISBA.
Okay.